January, and we'll start off with a moment of silence. And I ask that you also think about Councilwoman Kobe, who right now is in the hospital with some health problems, so keep her in your thoughts.
[inaudible]
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 Thank you, Chief. Uh, motions listed as if anyone has any comments to make at this time, public comments regarding the motions that are listed on the agenda, they come up at this time, say it's your name.
The only comment I have to make at this time, I'll make another comment later, where I want to commend more employees, what they did for the first snowfall, I think it was commendable what they did.
Thank you, Liam.
Thank you.
Any comments on the motions that are on the agenda? All right, we'll continue, uh, Councilwoman, continue when you read the motions for administration and finance, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Motion to approve the minutes from the council meeting on December 12th, 2011, and December 27th, 2011.
Second. Comments, discussion? Roll call, both please, Chief. Councilman Veris? Yes. Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President.
Motion to approve the January bill list, bill list of denim, and the December invoice from Gates to Sari and Nicholas.
Second. Comments? Chief? Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Veris? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President.
Motion to ratify the vote taken on December 27th, 2011, to remove Keith Hatcher from administrative leave and have him resume his, resume his duties as Public Works Superintendent effective December 28th, 2011.
Second. Let me make, uh, comments here. I think most of you know that Superintendent Hatcher was on leave. Uh, this is a personnel matter, why he was on administrative leave and why he came back, and we're not really at liberty to speak about the details of that, other than to, uh, to say the following. On October 8th, 2011, Public Works Superintendent Keith Hatcher was involved in a non-work-related incident that warranted placing Mr. Hatcher on paid administrative leave. For the past two and a half months, Borough Council has gathered and analyzed the facts surrounding this incident, and has determined that Mr. Hatcher did not violate any laws or department policies and should be returned to his duties as Public Works Superintendent without further delay. The Borough of Carnegie considers this a personnel matter and will have no further statement regarding the matter. I know that may not be satisfactory to a lot of folks, but there's legal issues why we do that. Any other comments on the council members? Chief? Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. Councilman Veris? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President.
Motion to ratify the vote taken on December 27th, 2011, to relieve Dan Betera from his temporary assignment as Public Works Superintendent and have him resume his duties as Assistant Working Foreman effective December 28th, 2012.
Second. Comments? Chief? Councilman Veris? Yes. Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President.
Motion to approve the request submitted by Kevin McFarland to return to his duties on the Shade Tree Commission.
Second. Comments?
Uh, Mr., I'll just call in that Mr. McFarland had some petty and family, uh, matters to deal with, some personal issues. Um, he's since dealt with them and, uh, wishes to, uh, continue on working with the Shade Tree Commission, and does a good job for us.
Thank you, Mr. Sarsfield. All in favor, say aye. Aye. opposed? Motion carries. We'll skip down to, uh, number three. Uh, Councilwoman Debco, please.
Uh, Mr. President, before you move on, we have one correction, uh, that we can note in minutes, but on motion D, it should be December 28th, 2011, not 2012.
Thank you.
Motion to approve payment the amount of $8,184.95 to South Hills area governments for invoice number one of the joint CCTV project, year six, project one.
Comments? Roll call, both please, Chief. Councilman Veris? Yes. Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President. Public safety motions, Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, motion A, it's listed on the, uh, public agenda, will be taken, um, at this time, council is a body, we're not going to take any action, um, we're going to continue to review that, um, and we will re-present that motion when we've made a decision on it. Um, motion B is motion to advertise Borough Ordinance 2371, ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie, creating a two-hour parking lot, Monday through Friday, between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., residents exempt on Sixth Avenue, both sides, between Steen Street and the dead end of Sixth Avenue.
Second. Some explanation for those who might be wondering what this is, uh, if you live anywhere in the vicinity of this building or the parking lot next to us, you know that the 4:40 lot fills up very early in the morning, and people who are commuters often take their opportunity to park on the streets in our neighborhoods in order to catch the bus into town. And, uh, as a consequence, we have a number of streets in the general vicinity and also down by the Bell Admiral Station, which we have limited to two-hour parking, and we've been doing that for the past 10 years. But this motion is to add an additional section of street to that ordinance, that additional section of street being, uh, Sixth Avenue between Steen Street and its dead end. So this is not a new ordinance, it's an addition, additional street onto an existing ordinance. Comments from council members?
Mr. President, I mean, also, this is just to advertise the ordinance, and the other thing is that, uh, if I'm incorrect here, let me know, Chief Harbin is working on a comprehensive plan because we can't keep up with it. If we put the two-hour signs on Sixth Avenue, which is just a matter of time before it's the next street above or the next street over. So Chief Harbin's been working diligently on a comprehensive plan to try to solve this issue. So I appreciate that, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That's all I have, Mr. President, thank you. Councilman Veris?
My first motion to adopt Borough Ordinance Number 2370, an ordinance of the Borough of Carnegie granting the conditional use application of Precious Angels Childcare Center to utilize the property located at 321 Third Avenue, block and lot number 102-V-118, as a childcare center.
Second.
If I may interject, Mr. President, a hearing was held last Monday night on this in front of council, um, the condition, on the conditional use application.
Thank you. Other comments?
Mr. President, I may have a comment. Uh, first of all, I, I'm sure this will probably pass, but I just want to say that, uh, I think it's a welcome addition for that area. We have a huge daytime population down there, and from what I know from our first facility, they do an excellent job in childcare, and I think that it'll be a benefit for not only that area, but for the whole community, so I just want to give it some positive rep, you know, positive attributes. Thank you.
No more comments, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Next motion to confirm approval and acceptance of work performed for release of bond number 0150-33184, in the amount of $129,000 for the public work order improvements, including the demolition of eight structures referred to under Work Order Number 310, 1310710, and bond number 015031615, in the amount of $616,781,000 for site development improvements, including drainage, utilities, paving, curb and gutter, and median modifications.
Second.
Um, just to clarify what this is, this is for a bond that CVS put up to the borough for improvements that were made. The bond was tenured improvements, of course, with the developer's agreement that we had with them, developer's agreement memorialized, um, certain things that the borough required of CVS to do in the process of building the CVS. Um, once this is, uh, the borough engineers go down and inspect it, all of the work that was required by the developer's agreement has been met, um, the release of the bond will basically signal the end of the construction, and an occupancy requirement, apartment can be open, I mean, excuse me, issued, and the CVS can get ready to open.
Thank you. And the opening date is?
It's my understanding it's Sunday, January 15th.
Fifteenth, this Sunday. Other comments? Roll call, both please, Chief. Councilman Veris? Yes. Councilwoman Debco? Yes. Councilman Katina? Yes. Councilman Sarsfield? Yes. President de Los? Yes. Motion, President. Committee reports, administration and finance, please, Councilman Katina.
For administration and finance, Mr. President, um, I received the P and L budget for last year today, and I'm going over that, um, for each category, and I'd like to present a full report next month as to where our highs and lows were and where our improvement can be, but I just need some time, obviously, since I just got that today, so that's all I have for committee reports, Mr. President.
Thank you, we'll be looking forward to that. Uh, Councilwoman Kobe is absent, as was already mentioned, Councilwoman Debco, please.
Thank you.
Councilman Sarsfield?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I just want to make a, a mention of a few items, uh, that will be taking place over the course of 2012. Um, by February or March of this year, we should have a motion to hire a 13th police officer. Um, I stood firm on this, how and provided we might increase taxes and, uh, it will not. Uh, in March, two of our officers would participate in a field exercise at Charters Valley High School, um, and I told them that with cooperation of the Carlington School Board, a similar exercise later in the year will be conducted at Carnegie Elementary. Um, this training is made possible through the Council of Governments, Chiefs of Police. Um, within the next few months, all of our officers will be certified in the use of the AR-15, and this weapon can be, become very useful in critical situations. Um, item four, this year, the borough will make a purchase of an SUV for the police department. This vehicle will be very helpful over the winter months when needing it, needing to get to serious calls. Um, I will continue to also work with Chief Harbin on receiving funding for the purchase of surveillance cameras for around the borough. On the fire department side of public safety, President de Los, Councilman Veris, and myself will be working on an ordinance for the fire department. I personally hope that this year becomes a turning point for the fire department-council relationship. After council discusses the ordinance, three-member panel of org will meet with the three members of the fire department for the passage of this ordinance. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Is there one thing I did collect that I might?
Yes, thank you, Councilman Sarsfield, and, uh, Councilman Katina, go ahead.
Um, one thing that I failed to mention in my committee report was that, um, we just received a report from Jordan Tax Service as of today, which is an updated summary print of delinquent real estate taxes, municipal claims summaries as of December 31st, 2011. This listing reflects all delinquent taxes through 2010. Jordan is now in the process of mailing delinquent notices to all accounts having addresses who have not been made current at this point in time. Um, the reason I'm bringing this up tonight is that in, at some point in the future, probably at or around 3/1 or March 1st, we could potentially be publishing the delinquent real estate tax list, um, with all of the names on here. So we would encourage anyone who feels that they possibly might be, might be delinquent or have questions, um, about tax bills or have any questions, what have you, to contact the municipal building and contact someone here in administration, and they will gladly go over the list for you and let you know. But like I've told my fellow council members, I would never raise taxes as long as there's revenue on the table, and this is very important, tax revenue that we need to be collecting. So therefore, that's why we feel strongly about publishing the list and putting these names out there, so hopefully, these people will pay their fair share of taxes, just like the rest of us. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I, they can come in person, but I think if some people have general questions, they very well can call over the phone, because obviously, there, we have an elderly, we have somewhat an elderly population that might not be able to make it to the news of mobile buildings, so I think it would be fine for them to call over the phone and talk to someone in administration.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Veris, a community development business liaison?
Uh, the only thing I have under business development, Terry, there's a new bar going to go in 30s, it's like they contacted you today. Uh, that's John Duran from Duran, Duran's Restaurant on East Main Street, and they're going to start construction after they get their permits to reopen that bar, or that lounge, or whatever it's going to be called, uh, in the near future. That's all that I have for business development.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, anything, Councilman Veris, on the school board?
Yes, just very quickly, I just want to go over the last election for the Carlington School Board. Uh, there were quite a few folks ran, uh, for reelection this time. Uh, Betsy Tesaro was re-elected from, um, Rosson Farms. She's also been, uh, voted as the Vice President of the School Board. Uh, Ray Wacoiak is from Carnegie, he had re-elected. Jim Shriver from Crafton, uh, his first term. Sharon Wilson re-elected from Crafton. David Russo's was on school board with me eight years ago, and then he skipped a term, and now he's back again. Uh, he's also was elected to President of the School Board. And Ray, it's either Appel or Apple, I don't know how to pronounce it exactly, uh, he's a new member of the school board. Uh, Joe Nempirio is the interim superintendent, and at the present time, they're out, are seeking applications for a new superintendent, which will probably take about 60 more days. Uh, that's all I have for the school board.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, the, uh, borough has three seats on our Lightbury Board. Uh, one of those, uh, three seats generally takes the lead in that, uh, committee, and that was me in the past, and will be Councilwoman Debco in the future. Uh, there have not been any meetings since that change of leadership, uh, on that committee, but if you have something you would like to add, Councilman, let us know.
[inaudible]
Thank you. Councilman Katina, anything on the COG?
The only thing I'd like to say about the COG is that we received a letter probably last month, within the past two weeks. Um, we saved approximately, with our salt price, through our joint purchasing alliance with COG, um, we saved approximately $60,000 through, with our rock price, our rock salt price, uh, that obviously goes on the roads in wintertime. So it saves us municipal, or it saves this municipality a lot of money, and when you take into account the dues for COG, or approximately $5,000, it pays for itself, as you can see it did this year, so, um, these joint purchasing agreements are great for municipalities, I just wanted to point that out to everyone, Mr. President.
Thank you. Uh, Connect, Councilwoman Debco, for those who don't know what Connect is, could you explain that?
Um, it's communities all getting the, sorry, it's communities all getting the other one, I'm not sure how many are in, because maybe. Thirty-five, thirty. Okay. That, um, actually Connect is what they're, they, right, right. No, that's okay, okay. Um, and actually, they have a meeting next week on the 19th, so that'll be the first meeting, um, there wasn't, there wasn't one in December. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll have a report on that, um, at the next meeting.
This is, it's a cooperative program between municipalities and boroughs. So, uh.
Is Chief Kandrax here? Ms. Allison?
It, Mr. President, I'm sure if I could speak, I'm in special need of that's for.
Ms. Kobe, yes, please.
Um, uh, I'm sure, quite certain that she was here, she bring to everybody's attention, we have the map over there for the 5K, um, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger and better and better, um, it's just a fantastic event, uh, so, you know, uh, if you're interested, we have the applications, sign up, and sign up early and well.
The 5K run, of course, the money for that goes to the fire department, uh, it's a benefit for the fire department, and, and it gets better each year. Last year, Chief, we raised how much money?
Over $13,000.
$13,000 on that run through the fire department.
How much are we destitute?
Uh, we're about, about $38,000 over four years.
Well, with that, we're going to jump down to the, uh.
The maintenance report.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. The criminal arrests for last month were twen, in citations were 22, the traffic citations were 50, we had 11 parking tickets issued, and complaints and self-initiated activity were 777, and they, that wasn't a Nick Perry number. Anyway, uh, the parking tickets, as you may notice, we, we had an amnesty for parking, so there was a 900% decrease for parking last, parking tickets last month, also, there was a vacation in there, but, uh, it's a little hard to get parking tickets when there's no parking, uh, when the beaters are all free. Uh, the year end, we had criminal arrests and citations of 433, we had traffic citations of 647, parking tickets of 1,606, and complaints and self-initiated activity that are handled by our police department, number 10,469. Uh, every, every time this year, the police department gives away some of their awards, the Iron Man Awards are for officers who take no sick days throughout the year, and once again, when they don't take a sick day, that means we don't have to bring someone in to fill their position, which means most likely no overtime, so these, these are, these awards are much appreciated. Uh, Chief Harbin, Sergeant Jeff Kennedy, Sergeant Ores, Officer Seaman, and Officer Ryder, all were, uh, shippings of the Iron Man Award for 2011. Once again, the, uh, police department nominates an Officer of the Year. This year, the chief has nominated Matt Ryder for Officer of the Year. Matt Ryder has been with our department a few years now, he does a great job for us, he, as you see, he didn't even take a sick day, even though he's a proud parent of a brand-new baby boy, he, he made it to work every day, so, uh, not only that, he's, he's been taking on some increased responsibilities, working with some detective, working with the detective, and, uh, he, he's just a fabulous addition to our department. In our report last month, in our report last month, we had an increase in harassment by communication. Uh, this, this definitely has become a much more of an issue in recent years. Now, a lot of this deals with the internet, maybe some Facebook, and some of the other, uh, social media sites, where, where people are getting harassed through these communications. Uh, we will be having a cyber safety for the parents of Carlington High School, which will be coming up probably at the, in the middle of March, well, the date, we should have a phone date by next month. To let everyone know that just because it's for the parents of Carlington High School doesn't mean that anyone couldn't attend these cyber safety programs. So Sergeant, like, will be given a cyber safety program, and I, I think it's a much needed program in this, in this environment. Last month, we, uh, we had an armed robbery at Family Dollar Store in Carnegie, and I, the, the good news is, is that the armed robbery occurred at 8:00 in the morning, and that before midnight, our officers had a suspect under arrest, which I thought was absolutely fantastic, yeah. It, it was a total team effort, and some of the officers involved were Sergeant Kennedy, Officer Lawrence, Officer Quattram, Officer Seaman, Officer Gump, and Officer Ryder. They did a fantastic job to bring this fugitive, even though it was a short time, to justice. And it wasn't an easy crime to solve, by the way, because the gentleman was, he was wearing a hoodie and a mask, and so they, they had to identify who the gentleman was and where he lived, and they did some great police work for this. Also, on the crime solving front, our department was able to locate some of the stolen items from a burglar ramp on Beetwood Avenue. Uh, the burg, these items were at a pawn shop, uh, we, they were identified by the, uh, by the victim, and, uh, the suspect who pawned it has been identified and will be charged appropriately. And this, this is kind of a unique situation, this, this next thing doesn't happen that often. Um, we, we actually solved a crime using forensics twice within a couple months. On November 30th, a resident reported a theft of jewelry in her home, a sus, a subsequent investigation by our officers included the processing and lifting of latent fingerprints. Very seldom, I know it happens all the time on CSI, but very seldom in the world, real world, does this lead to identifying a victim and arrest. In this case, it absolutely did, so this is the second time that we've had success with that in recent, in, in recent months, so very, very well done. Uh, give a quick update on Campbell's Run Creek, all the releases have been signed, they've been turned in, the Army Corps of Engineers are now is formulating a final plan, and, uh, they should be beginning relatively soon, and I should probably be able to have more information on all the dates and times of when this, when things will be rolled out at the next meeting. Lastly, well, lastly, but, um, one thing I do want to mention is Carnegie is truly a special place. I want to send out a very special thank you to all the organizations that make the holiday a very special place for everyone in our borough. We have places like the Church of the Atonement, who, who has a Christmas Day dinner every year, they serve a lot of people there, it's a fantastic thing, and, and so when people don't have a place to go on Christmas Day, they can go to the Church of Atonement or get a meal delivered to them. The Boys and Girls Club provided a dinner for 15 needy families this year. They also provide, uh, toys and dinner for all the children of their organization. St. Elizabeth Ann Seaton, they have a food bank that provided food on a daily basis for many, many people within our community during this holiday season. The Carnegie Police Department, especially under the direction of Chief Harbin, ran the Toys for Tots program, and they also delivered toys to every door at the Carnegie Towers, uh, where there was a child, red side. We also delivered two big bags of toys to the governor's house for, for the children that live there. Uh, the Carnegie Collier Rotary, they provide shoes and coats and books to the elementary students at Carnegie Elementary. The Salvation Army, they provide food, coats, and toys to many of our residents in the surrounding area. Carnegie Elementary themselves, they, uh, their children there, especially the second graders, brought, uh, collected toys for Toys for Tots. And then Saint Peters, Saints Peter Paul and Solid Rock, Saints Peter and Paul and Solid Rock Foundation, both had Thanksgiving Day dinners at their facility and deliver meals on those dinners. meals on those days. And lastly, but definitely not least, St. John's Evangelistic, Evangelic, excuse me, Evangelistic Lutheran Church runs the Meals on Wheels, and they make sure that they deliver meals for days that they will not be delivering frozen meals. And they also deliver a meal for the winter, one or two meals for the winter that they can freeze, so in case that the weather gets bad, they will have a meal when they're, when they're unable to deliver. With all that being said, it's without a doubt that Carnegie is an absolutely special place, and so many people take so much time and care into this community. Those are just the large organizations. There's a ton of individuals that donate. There's also a ton of businesses that participate. One example is Key Environmental collected 10 boxes of food for the food bank, plus donated $250. Cantley's Bar, they, they collected tons of coats for a coat drive, not to mention toys for, Toys for Tots drive. So there are many, many places and individuals that really contribute to this being a great community. Lastly, on, on the Meals on, well, two more things, I'm sorry. On the Meals on Wheels, they are desperate needed drivers. If you have time during the day, it takes about an hour to an hour and a half out of your day, and you could deliver some meals for Meals on Wheels, trust me, you will, it's very rewarding. It's, it's something you'll never regret doing. They could use you, so please stop down and see them at the Lutheran Church. With the Meals on Wheels too, they are in desperate need of a slicer. Right now, they have to slice everything by hand. They have to, I'm, I'm meeting with the, the head of the Meals on Wheels, and they will give me a price on the, on what a slicer is, and I, I am going to contribute the first part of the donation towards that. But if there's anyone out there who would like to donate towards a slicer, either let me know, or let the Meals, the, the people know at Meals on Wheels at the Lutheran Church. And what I'd like to do is to have this slicer donated in dedication of Paulie Gaskett, who was the head of Meals on Wheels for a number of years, who just passed away recently. So if you have it, if you have some money, I know it's hard after the holidays, we'd love for you to contribute to this, so we can get them a slicer. And on the last note here, Mary Snyder turned 100 years old the other day. She's, her, her and her son Bill live in Carnegie, and I think that's just a fact, that is that we have a centaur, a centaurian there, is that how you say?
Centaurian.
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 Centaurian, here in our community. So I'd like to congratulate her on her 100th birthday. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, we'll take comments, general comments from anyone in the public. Please step up and state your name, please, and where you live.
I just had a question, I don't even know, Lamar County, I don't even know that it will be answered right now. I think it's concerning, and enforcement did, I think it's gonna take place on January 14th, 12th, concerning commercial vehicles being parked on the street. Now, they put it on service pickup trucks and stuff like that, and I think the gross weight was, um, 9,000 pounds, and mine is like 5,000 pounds. I'm wondering, is that something that, you know, they just kind of put them on the different trucks, or every truck that they put it on, is that something that I, when I need to consider?
Well, let me, let me first tell you about the ordinance, and for those who don't know. We did pass an ordinance last month, an experimental parking ordinance, and there is one part of that ordinance which we've had a number of resident complaints about, and that part of that ordinance is for fleet vehicles. Does your vehicle have a, a company logo or something on the side of it?
No.
It's just a pickup truck?
It's not just a pickup truck, it's a pickup truck where it's like a utility vehicle, where you have like the, you know, a little.
The bins on the side.
And, but the gross weight is, I think, you know, 5,000 or something like that there, but it's not like a, a fleet vehicle or anything like that. It doesn't have a name on it, but I was just concerned, because, I mean, I want to comply if I have to, because I see it's gonna be a five of a hundred, and they said some other stuff as it goes along.
How many wheels do you have on the truck?
Just.
Four. Well, what kind of truck is it?
It's a GMC, an 87 GMC Sierra 2500.
And it, and it's got bins on the back?
It has just like compartments on the side going around, just like where you can put different things on the side of it, but the bin is actually still like a 4x8, the same size, you know, as the inside of there is the same, you know, space inside the 4x8, but it just has like those little things on the side of it.
There is, the main thrust of this ordinance was that we do have in our residential areas some commercial trucks being parked, large trucks, box trucks, like U-Haul trucks, red trucks, construction vehicles, trailers, construction trailer, dump trucks. And so we're trying to craft an ordinance to let people know that they need to find another place to park those things, for a couple of reasons. One, to, in some cases, it limits the ambulances and fire vehicles from getting through the neighborhoods. Often, it's just unsightly.
Right.
So we are, we recognize there may be some problems with it, that's why we passed the ordinance as an experiment, so that we could find out where, where the problems are. And so we appreciate you bringing that up to us, and there's a 90-day, is that right, Chief, a 90-day trial period on that ordinance?
Yeah, and just, just to clarify, what you got was a notification, and, and what we did is make a general notification.
Yes.
Before any enforcement would take place, it would have to fit the criteria of, of the ordinance, and it doesn't appear right now, what you're telling me, that your vehicle would be in violation.
Okay, all right. My name's Eric Blumberg, I'm here about the same ordinance, 2361. I park two of my vehicles on the street, and I do live on a.
Dead-end street.
So, my trucks are pickup trucks, three-quarter ton, they weigh 9,200 pounds, which is under limit for what you refer to as 9,500 pounds, however, I do have magnets on them for my business.
Good.
According to, what is it that you all consider a fleet? Can you define that?
We had, that was, that was one of the topics of debate, what is a fleet? We have a couple of folks in, in the borough who are running businesses out of their homes, and they have three or four or five vehicles parked on the street that they're using to run their business. They may not have any kind of logos or magnet signs on the side of them, but that's what our original intent was with this ordinance, was to say if you're running a business out of your house, and you have a number of vehicles, that you're, you're taking space away from your neighbors, and it's problematic. Your, your particular truck.
I live in a.
I do that the logo is, is not outside of the limits, you're saying?
Well, I, I, I do own four trucks.
Okay.
Two, I do park in my driveway, two, I do park in my street. The two that, that park in my driveway are in violation of your code.
Okay.
And I have always parked in, in my driveway, because they are new, they're brand-new trucks. Now, you know, for instance, the year of 2009, 10, the year of the storm, February, my workers and I, everyone's in clean ocean, my street, Core Street, the borough, they come down there, but they're also busting their rear ends, you know, to the state of emergency and what have you, and, you know, that's what we did to help out the community, and I, you know, I do set all the things besides the plan. But, you know, I, I guess what I'm asking is, is can this be amended due to circumstances such as mine, or, you know, other people's? I mean, you know, from my understanding, you guys took this from Crafton's? Like, you got some thoughts on Crafton?
It was, it was a combination from several different municipalities.
Yeah, for instance, at Crafton, they charge for commercial vehicles to park in their area, I mean, maybe that will help raise some revenue, help pay for somebody, be part of the salary or something.
I did check into that, remember we were talking about that on the phone?
Yes.
You're allowed one commercial vehicle.
I, I don't know.
I know, but say, they, they, but it still has to be within the limits of their, of their specifications.
I mean, because I, I. I offer a 24-hour service, where I need my trucks at my disposal, for myself and my workers, so that we can take care of whatever services are. You know, with, with this being passed, it does affect my livelihood, and I really don't have any worries.
If I can ask, how, how long have you lived in Carnegie?
Over three years. Well, three years of this, of this residence, prior to four or five years of my life.
Right, but, I mean, you, you moved to Carnegie under the belief that you have these vehicles, and that, you know, Carnegie was one community that.
No, I didn't.
It wouldn't have, wouldn't have a problem parking these vehicles.
That was not my thought at all, whatsoever, I never had that thought, yes, sir.
Okay. You know, I, you know, I, when we proposed this ordinance, you know, I was able to look at it in the borough code and find that we could do it, it's an exploratory ordinance, and each and every one of us have received, you know, one comment, one way or another.
Sure.
You know, we, we went from thinking that there was about 46 vehicles that we'd be concerned with, now, you know, I'm hearing that the number could be down to 15 or so, you know, I think, you know, if we move along, get a more accurate fix on it. But, you know, I, I think that Carnegie is, is a working-class town, you know, and, you know, I, I would have a tough time prohibiting that. I could see tractor-trailers, you know, things that.
I, I, you know, the mayor and I, we spoke, I don't know, I'm sorry, the mayor and I spoke, and, you know, he expressed some, like, I don't know, I won't speak for everybody here, but I, some of the concerns and problems for the neighborhood, and that was trucks parking in front of residential homes on a regular consistent basis, where on my street, I, you know, for instance, I have a, an empty lot, which I'm trying to find the owners, and I'd like to buy the lot, we're looking into that. You know, I've been maintaining the lot, cut the grass there for the last year, which I believe the Carnegie Borough normally does twice a year, but it attracts some rodents and whatnot. I have two dogs, they end up coming over to my yard, just in order to prevent from how I've cut it. But, you know, it's, if I, you know, I'd be hypocrite if I said that I wouldn't be mad if I had trucks parked in front of my house, if I was on my street, I would, I'd be upset if this, if I had trucks parked in front of my own house that I paid taxes for, I'd be mad.
Well, I mean, let me ask you, if this would were to pass, I mean, where would you put your, your trucks in?
I, I don't.
Well, I thought you said your, the two trucks that you park are under 9,200.
Second, they're, they are 9,200, but according to your.
They're under fleet.
Yeah.
Ford vehicles, they are.
I mean, I have a letter here from my insurance agent.
It's still, we, we talked about, well, just to clarify, they keep saying the word experimental ordinance.
Yes, sir.
There, there's a reason for that, okay? Somebody at council identified a problem, and they're not sure if this is the way to solve it, or rewording the ordinance. So this or, this is only gonna be effective for 90 days, and then they're gonna revisit the issue and see if it actually works, and maybe there are some changes to it that would be necessary, and your suggestions at that, you know?
I don't, I won't make that, I'm just, I don't know what this solution is, I, I don't know, I mean.
But, but this is the trial, to see if this could be the solution, and maybe there's some tweaks to this ordinance, maybe there's other things, but it's, it's a step to see if you can get this.
Yeah, I mean, I asked my.
Barred song.
I asked my insurance agent what considers this a fleet, and they said eight vehicles or more. And I asked, I said my eligible for fleet insurance, they said absolutely not, because you only have four vehicles, it's eight vehicles or more. If you go into a car dealership to buy a fleet, it's eight, eight to 10 vehicles or more. Yeah, so your definition is different than what the actual definition really is.
Thank you, sir. And feedback like that is what is appreciated, so that this can be, for, can be made to work.
Right. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric.
My name's Rick Mendy, and I live up on Hall Street, and I'm here about the same time, same part of the borough. I lived in this borough for a few years, and I got a, a work from a company, and that's a big vehicle, it's a logo, it's a car. And I need to know first.
A car?
Excuse me?
A car?
Yes, a car.
Okay.
But it is a logo car, and I need to know if this falls in that jurisdiction of the product.
It was not our intent to include cars.
It's what?
It's not.
Okay, so a, a car.
Because the cars are not the problem, and I, we understand, some people have worked cars.
The issue with, you know, emergency vehicles getting through.
Yes, understood.
Because I find this on my windshield, I was just curious to see what the stipulations were.
Initially, when we were looking at fleets, there was some discussion about whether cars with, with company signs on the side are part of the fleet, and a lot of times, companies like a Verizon or something does have large fleets of cars, as well as trucks, and so initially, that was included, but.
I just have one car, and I guess I do park religiously in front of my house. We have a, everybody parks, everybody has their own parking destination, but I, I don't take anybody else's parking space, I can take mine. I just didn't know, since I find this on my windshield, like I said again, what the criteria was, if this fell into that being of call.
We're not, we're not planning to include cars.
Okay.
Well, I suppose if you had eight cars.
Yes, unless you had eight cars.
In front of your house, but it's not attached to it, one car.
Well, I think I said, I was just curious, but, you know, the ordinance notes on my windshield.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. One thing he did say that I, that I find, is that everybody has their own little spot, Chief has said it's before, and you, you kind of park in front of your house, and everything's well and good in that type of situation. So, thank you for bringing that up, appreciate it.
Hello, my name's Dave Cholfer, I'm pretty much, I go to the same thing everyone else has. I, I've lived in the community for 30-plus years, my parents lived in the community also. I, I drive a F-150 Terminix truck that has a ton of, a hard ton of cover on top of it. I don't have the luxury of having a garage, a driveway, so my options are park directly in front of my house, which I do. And I woke up one morning with that letter on my thing, on my windshield, and, you know, I fall under, well under the 9,200 pounds, but the only one that I fall under is the fleet vehicle.
It's regular.
I have, it's just an F-150 with a hard ton of cover, inside of it's just cabinets for, you know, and they're locked for me to store, you know, for what I do daily, but I have no warehouse to park my vehicle. I mean, I park direct probably 10 feet from my front door, you know, beside my yard. I just need, you know.
Well, I think we're gonna get confused too, with the fleet is, that vehicle is part of a fleet, but that fleet is not sitting in front of this house. I think that's where.
You're talking about the fleet, you, you mean the fleet of the whole company?
Yeah.
Okay, so if I'm part of a fleet, I'm okay.
You're okay, you're under 9,200.
I'm well under 9,200 pounds.
Mr. President, though, I don't think the ordinance was written by a fortunate.
And this is part of the experimental thing, we need for you folks to come up and tell us your particular situation, so that as we continue to debate this, this ordinance.
I just wanted to have peace of mind knowing that I'm okay, I don't wanna, I can't afford to have a $100 fine, let alone a $10 fine. So I just don't want to go from 100, to the next thing, 400 and $1,000, so, as long as I know that I'm okay to park my vehicle from my house.
Well, as the chief said, there won't be any enforcement on this, at, at least until the experimental period gets done, and if we need to recraft the language, then we would do it at that time.
Okay, so I should revisit this 90 days, come back to another meeting, or am I okay? So I have the.
You should be okay, your, your, your vehicle is not what we were intending to target.
But, but along that, the chief said that there's not gonna be any enforcement for a period, but, you know, there might be a notice put on the cars, so that people, that, that's what council needs, is to come back and, people come back and say this works, this doesn't work. So, like, if you say now that there's not gonna be enforcement for a period, if people ignore this and don't come back and tell, tell council their thoughts, then ultimately, you might end up with an ordinance in 90 days that you don't like. So, that's why you need people coming and tell council what works, what doesn't work. So when you're coming here tonight, and all the papers came, that's, that's very helpful.
And, 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 Mr. President, you know, I, I know we all got scheduled meeting after meeting and stuff, but, you know, I, I mean, obviously, this is a pretty hot issue, we want to try to maintain, you know, our, our community, but we also want to work with our residents. Maybe, you know, prior to, you know, the 90 days, or after the 90 days before we pass anything, we could put something in the single item post gazette, advertise, open a meeting, you know, suggest that people come and get feedback back and forth, and, and before we sort of final craft. These folks have known that, you know, it's obviously that the notice on your vehicle. Was how I was aware. Was how you were aware, but you came down to tell us about it, and I think. I mean, my suggestion, if that ordinance would be.
I mean, my suggestion for that whole ordinance would be, I mean, you know, like if you're that clustered on streets and everyone's concerned about, you know, the police officer vehicles, fire trucks, emergency vehicles, that, then maybe considering only having parking on one side of select streets and dark blocks like that, and alleyways seem to be the worst area, because I know where I live at, there's some alleyways that, you know, you barely get caught for, so, but, thank you.
My name's Jason Vance, I'm here for the same issue. I drive a Montan Chevy Express, New England Air. It's my transportation back and forth at the work. Your other rule was four wheels on the road. I got a foot off the road, do a walk, so if I could travel there, park two wheels on that, two wheels on the road, I'm good?
Oh, no, no, that's not, that's not the intent.
It's just being a door wheel, you're talking about a door wheel.
Yeah, if you have a pickup truck that has six wheels on it, that was the purpose of that language, or, or a dump truck or something like that. You have just a regular pickup truck?
It's a van.
A van?
Yeah.
And it's, it's, why do you think the notice was put on there? Is it because of the weight of the vehicle or because of it has a company sign on the side?
Company sign, ladder racks, ladders.
Ladder racks.
Do you know what the weight is?
It's one ton, I don't know for sure, it's a little.
Is there a company, yeah, a symbol on the side of it?
Only four wheels, right?
It seems like they're all, almost all are fleet vehicles.
At the moment, it looks like mostly that's the issue.
It's a 395.
No, it does sound like, it sounds like the fleet vehicle, fleet vehicle design just is the main problem with the ordinance.
All right, thank you.
You know, I think I have the solution since assessment program, no better do, give them everything we have, let them feed us and clothe, and we die. Let them bury us too, with all they need around here. Up the food bank the day before, a couple of days before Christmas, almost three hundred people were up there. And I'm telling you something, that's just a local community, am I right? Just imagine all the way around here, if they have money for everything else. Any political endeavor taken, come, no, and they have all kind of perks. Just like a coach in Penn State makes over two and a half thousand a year, plus perks, right?
Hey, Leo.
And the dean, and the dean puts them because of your ears, puts email. And the tuition went up, and we sit back. I've been coming down here for years, from Covington, it was almost a done deal, all of a sudden, boom, nothing has happened.
Leo, our second year.
What in the world?
You're not going to talk to the pay time?
You know, enough is enough, right? The league is here. All these schools, all these, just like I told our school director years ago, I said, you bought these schools, you didn't block no man's land, you bought all kind of athletics there, and he said to me, quote, this is good, Leo. And I said to him, everything is good in this life, and I think I'm a freedom candidate up in the hill there. And he said to me, you're crazy, Leo, and I said to him, would you? End of the, end of the talk. And I thank you and I will do it.
Thank you, Leo.
I hate to go down every month and repeat, 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 you're done. You ought to see that bus up there, but you have to live there. Like the Indian chief said, walk them on my shoes, just like these assessors. Let them come here and walk in my shoes for a walk. Thank you very much and I will do it.
My name's Adam, I live on Beechwood Avenue. It's concerning the commercial parking, it's not a quarter-ton pickup truck. It's part of a fleet that belongs to my employer, the Royal Capital, so that's the only, well, it's covered, but it's just the thing.
It shouldn't be a problem.
I agree, it's a very, very difficult, so.
Shouldn't be a problem, thank you.
We weren't trying to, we weren't trying to make this harder for, for average citizens, we are trying to, we are trying to enforce the select, we are trying to enforce making it better for the community as a whole, and what we actually did was, it sounded like we made it harder for a whole lot of working-class citizens, and that wasn't the intention of the ordinance, to be quite honest.
At that point then, at this point, we'll go to Good and Welfare, Councilman Beers?
Nothing this evening.
Anything to Demco? Councilman Sarsfield?
I just want to wish all my Ukrainian cousins and friends a belated Merry Christmas, just celebrated that on the seventh, and, you know, to everybody, a happy new year and I look forward to a positive, constructive year for this council and for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Neketina?
The only thing I have, Mr. President, this evening is just a little bit, stay tuned to find out what happens with the assessment mess. It's, it's challenging to say the least, I'm not sure what's going to happen with it, but hopefully it'll work out for everyone in the long run. Yeah, the next update's tomorrow, so like I said, stay tuned, hopefully we'll all be able to afford our taxes in two thousand and twelve, one way or the other. So, thank you, Mr. President.
And I would just say that I appreciate the confidence that my fellow council members have put in me, electing me last week to president of council. Hopefully I'll do a good job, although I hope it changes my strategy, I'm told. But I appreciate that and look forward to, to serving all of you. Have a motion, Joe Jarrett? Motion. In favor?
Aye.